Okay, I think it is. I'm gonna take off my mask while I'm talking, I'll call meeting to order. We do not have microphones tonight, so I need to ask everyone to please speak up. And really make a point to, you know, try and make your voice carry so that everyone can hear you and and the people, anyone who is watching online will be able to pick up and hear us, if that's possible. Even though all of school committee members who are participating tonight are in person, I'd like to have a motion for adoption of remote participation in case we have anyone from the public participating. We can vote in person, we don't need to do our roll call, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
And opposed? Thank you very much. Isn't that nice? Okay. Have we received any public comments?
Here.
Okay. Let's move on to peer's report. And I'd like to start with some acknowledgements, because we do have some advice to say today. And I'm gonna start with Dave O'Connor, this is Dave. A meeting, Dave has been on the school committee for six years.
Ten.
Ten years, my goodness, ten years. And, you know, very ably representing Bolton. And I know, Dave, I so appreciate the perspective you have brought as a parent, as a businessman. You're not necessarily the person who talks most on the school committee, other people get that accolade, but when you do, we all listen, and I really have appreciated that. And we are very much going to miss you. So thank you so much for all you have done for Minuteman.
It has been a privilege. I continue to support and will support following vocational education. I went to a vocational school, I went to Assabit. My wife came here, not for this school, but to the previous building. And it's been in the family blood. My father-in-law served on Minuteman's first school. So, like I said, it's been in the blood. I will miss it, but unfortunately, personal work commitments are taking me elsewhere. And so I hope that we have someone with as much passion and support as all the members currently have on this committee. I feel that the committee is actually working cooperatively, but we have a number of diverse views that are supportive. A lot of that cohesiveness and stuff has worked through with this administration and specifically under the guidance of Dr. McQuillan. And again, you know, we are very fortunate to have this.
You know, Jennifer has said that she will, but like she's working it out so she can continue to be here until a replacement is announced, so we're not losing Jennifer totally.
That is contingent on the board of select and approving her. I'm assuming they will, they would rather have her living in there than not, but we also have to look and see how that is possible.
If they don't choose somebody else, you remain?
No, because I have to give a big search for the resignation. So they can then, what they're gonna have to appoint is a temporary member. So I can't imagine why they wouldn't. It's in their best interest to make sure that there's somebody here representing my husband. And I am very sad to go, I have enjoyed working with all of you. It's just, I, everything in my life has gotten so complicated. I've stopped doing any one thing really well and done a lot of things really badly. There's people now and I have to give my report on the different tennis evaluation. You know, it is, there's balls have been dropping all over my life. I did commit to this one year to make sure that we got through the superintendent's search without having somebody in here trying to figure it all out. And I will miss all of you significantly, but I'm not going away yet. But if they find somebody, if I meet in July, I also completely committed to helping that person come up to speed. Would be productive and knowledgeable, intelligent part of this thing.
Well, I know we all really appreciate that, you know, when we, when I think of the definition of just a very capable person, it's Jennifer Leoni is the definition that comes to mind. So good to be missing you. But I know, I'm hoping we continue to see you for a while, but we will see what happens. But again, thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. Oh, I have to be louder? Oh, I feel like I'm yelling. Okay, I will try and be louder. And of course, this is Ed's last school committee meeting.
Why does he call it emergency? Why is this what? I moved at least.
So, you know, I'm not sure how Ed feels about that, but I can say that, you know, to me, it's, you know, kind of almost a feeling of trepidation. So, I mean, I remember my first time that I came and met with Ed with the Act in Town moderator who was trying to convince me to kind of take this position for active. And it was like just after a really, it didn't take long, but just being so impressed with Ed's vision, his passion, what he was building, his dedication to the students was just so absolutely clear. I, you know, I just said, of course, of course, if I have this opportunity, I want to do it, because, you know, even in that one meeting, I was so impressed with him. And just looking at his accomplishments over the last few years, certainly with the building, with the district reorganization, with the academy model, with, you know, really making Minuteman an award-winning academic institution. It's just phenomenal. And Ed, you have, you know, I know my admiration, and I am just so, feel so lucky that I've had this opportunity to work with you. So we do have something, you know, from the school committee that we'd like to present, so let's hold here for a second.
This beautiful white sheet.
You're very old.
Three hundred threads. Egyptian. Oh, Egyptian, no. All right.
Ed, you can come out here and be unveiling.
Oh, wow.
I was gonna say, careful.
Well, this is a gift from the members of the school committee to you, which I think will fit very well in your new office.
Awesome. Oh, my goodness. Oh, wow. I'll take your pictures later, Dave.
We need another picture.
Okay.
Wow, that's very generous.
Before I open it up to the rest of the school committee, I do have a little proclamation for you from the state senate. And I will just, I'll try and read it loud, I'm seeing Julia's saying more and more official citations. Be it known that the Massachusetts senate hereby extends its congratulations to Dr. Edward McQuillan in recognition of your retirement after fifteen years of leadership as superintendent and your many contributions to the Minuteman High School. Go, Ed.
Thank you. I really appreciate the support that I have had at school, especially the last ten years or so. And the majority support I've had so far. You've come a long way, you've looked as if by yourself. Coming on, you've been supportive of the vision. Certainly, the administrators and staff, teachers, advisory committee members, the support of the vision, really many times their energy kept me on the table. Continue to work on behalf of the district. It's, I was preparing some remarks for graduation. I realized that it's been nearly two thousand seniors have come through this place during my time. And it's been just an incredible honor. It's been pretty difficult, but it's been very satisfying. I know what I love to do, and I know what I love, I've been able to do it here. I'll continue to support the school and superintendent, whatever way she requests. You know, I'm not sure what to do next. I don't know what to do. But I'm pretty sure I'm gonna do well. I'm not gonna fail retirement, it's all my quality. Someone I saw last night, Jim Lavery, Bernie Paul, Bill Blake, Michelle Roach, great leaders. So, so thank you. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to add, Penn, you said it well, because I remember that when I first got a call and said this last night, when I first got a call, that you'd like to be governor's representative to the school committee, because they didn't have. And I said, oh, well, what's Minuteman? Now, I've been active in my town, so you'd think I'd know, but we were a large part of our budget, because the amount of students we were spending sending there, which was probably zero. So I came out and I said, well, I think I have a talk for the superintendent. Check this place out. And Ed was willing to talk to me, and I don't know how long we were together, but it was twenty-five minutes, an hour, something like that. And he told me about vocational education, he told me about what's going on here. It sounded pretty interesting to me, and I was very active in education reform at that time. And I thought this was gonna be something that I'd like to do. But he then said, and I think we're gonna build a new building. And I thought, well, Ed, I did that at Sherburne, I had the effort to do that. I would love to do that again, because I think that's what I like to do most in life. And so here we are, never quite sure how many years later, it was a many years later that it was done, and Ed was drawn on board to help make that happen, and he did. And there were a lot of battles to be won, but we won those battles. We collectively won those battles, a lot of help. We had to go out with citizens, get rid of government officials. You can go right to where it really counts, so the rubber meets the road, and we got it done. And I looked at this building, and Ed, it's your vision, the vision of your staff also, because you built it around education plan. And that was designed, it came into design way before we talked about concrete, iron, and all steel, and that sort of thing. Ed, it's been an honor to work with you, a pleasure to work with you, and I can say in front of this group, you're my friend, so. Thank you.
Ford, when they asked me to join the school committee, I actually said, what the heck is a school committee? Even a lot more coolless than you. So in twenty-three years here, I've worked with over a hundred schools. And I don't know why this says for the good of the organization, it's really changed my life. And I have to tell you, Ford, David and Jennifer, you're A-list. I work with a lot of people, a lot of different capabilities, a lot of different levels of cooperation skills and whatnot. And I know when a new school committee joins, whether it's gonna be a good thing or a bad thing, both you two are looking to A-list school committee members, people who don't just, well, they support the mission, they don't just, you know, vote to have things carry on. You're vested in it, you do the hard work, you make the thing work. That's the A-list. And we've been very, very lucky to have you here. And I hope replacements may not have a skill set that's hurtful. And as far as Ed goes, I've worked with a lot of administrators here. I'll be with them. And at Newton's School, I got to view a lot of administrators and how they operate. And I have to say, there are not a lot of people in your class of coming. And you, that I've seen in my twenty-three years here. You're a rare body of skills and personality. And it has been a great privilege and an honor to see how it should be done. And I just wish we could bottle a little bit of you, because there are a lot of schools out there that would be a lot better than they are. They have some of your qualities. I'm not exaggerating, I'm not just faking it up, people saying goodbye. That's what I've observed these years, and it's absolutely true. So it's been a pleasure to work with you. And I'm sure you'll do all sorts of fascinating things.
Well, I want to talk about fun, because I'm like Ford, a education hobbyist, trying to improve schools. And this has been a fun journey, because we actually got done what we want to do most of the time. We try to improve schools, we need someone who works, you know, and it's just depressing. And this time, it wasn't, and we got a new school, it was largely Dr. McQuillan and his staff, and just all of the energy and positive, moving forward step by step, that led the way. But it's also just all of the people that came together at the right moment to make it happen. And it's just amazing. And so many people said, nobody's gonna ever do that, can't do it, and of course, we won. And that feels good, and thank you, Ed. So, Ed, I think you said gratitude, and I think gratitude has returned so many times over. So, thank you.
Okay. Big talk, Tim. It's fine. Can you hear me somewhere? No. Okay. Moving on. So, we have, we've been receiving inquiries of interest in Minuteman from potential new districts. I received an inquiry from Sudbury. We know that Watertown has, is exploring options. And I did get a response, I'd sent a letter to the chair of school committee at Watertown, and I did get a response this week saying, you know, they're working at options which include Minuteman. Given that, and you know, that this is an issue that we, you know, will probably be needing to deal with in the, in our upcoming meetings, I've asked Jeff if the CAA committee could take on maybe developing a, you know, kind of criteria or how we would want to look at, you know, the issue of bringing on new members and to bring that back to the school committee for us to be considering at our July meeting. So Jeff said yes, and has scheduled a meeting of the CAA committee. So the committee will be looking at, you know, putting together maybe a rubric of, you know, what we want to be looking at or considering as we think about bringing on new member tax. So more to come at our upcoming meetings. Yes, I was at a work-related meeting, and on different topics. And a member of the Locksboro community, uh, community, said that the select board is starting to entertain the same type of sentiment. So the floodgates will.
Well, well, well.
Well said, Michael.
Does anybody have an aspirin?
Well, and this is exactly why we should, you know, when we're not thinking about a particular community, we should have a conversation about how we would want to be thinking about this discussion.
I'll remind you too, that regional agreement is pretty clear, the steps that have to occur. Seems like no one reads it, because every time I get a call from one of these committees, it's referencing that, and I'm reading from it. So they, you know, their request to you has to be acted upon. You don't have a choice not to. So, and then you, oh, you all have to be unanimous in that first request. And then it goes back to them. I guess I just, you know, it's good to have a rubric, understand how to deal with this, that's based upon the regional agreement, and perhaps some advice from council. But you don't want to be perceived as setting up unnecessary obstacles to someone trying to access. Because your regional agreement is clear that someone, anyone, has to.
Jeff, I see two really important aspects. If it gets approved. The first one is a conversation. Of the pros and cons of having more financial stability, but on the other hand, perhaps fewer slots for us. So that's gonna come into their decision as to whether they want to have something. The other thing is that we may not be able to dictate the process, but we certainly can come up with criteria of whether we are going to recommend our opinion as to whether we should move forward. And that is, I think, something that we can talk about. So maybe the procedure itself is written down, but these other issues are things that we can't discuss. And I, you know, it's a combination of what we think is right, and also, in this particular instance, I think that obviously the member town's have to vote yes and yeah. But if we, if one of these people are serious, we'll have, start having that discussion about the problem as well. So that's how I look at it, whether to dictate steps of what's gonna happen, you say it, play it out.
That's right, that's also.
The financial analysis for each quest is. Here, I'll give you one of our pieces of advice about this. Please, there is a clause of the regional agreement where they're allowed to take a four-year ramp up on capital costs. I would not consider that any, they all are got the cost retro actually up front.
That's something that's optional for us.
Yeah, completely optional, and if they ever read it, it was.
Okay, so there's, there will be, there will be more on this issue to come. Um, final issue that I wanted to bring up under the chair's report. Our next meeting, July nineteenth, will also be an in-person meeting. This will be Kathleen Dawson's first meeting as superintendent. It is also our reorganization meeting where we will be voting on officers. So I ask all of you to be thinking about that. I will be in touch with people, and so that we can be thinking about officers and committees. I know we often don't do the committees till September, but I just want to start that process. And particularly if we are going to be losing Dave and Jennifer, we know that there'll be new people in, but we have some very talented people that, you know, we'll be losing. So, so think about that reorganization meeting in July. And Ed, I do want to take, as we're talking about that, thinking about that, to really acknowledge and thank you, everything that you have done to make the transition as smooth as possible.
Both of you.
Kathleen.
She's acknowledged that.
Okay, superintendent's report. Ed, Ford, who's gonna start?
I'll take the building committee part, pretty quick and easy. MSBA project reissueing will be closed out in March of 2023. At their meeting, they need some time to be able to review all the paperwork that we get to them. So, March twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-three. I wish we had that much time to review their stuff, but anyway. That's where we are with that. And we are closing out on that with Gilbey and our next July meeting of the building committee. And so it's moving along quickly. We have, just as a side note, last evening, Skanska, Castle Bowes, Gilbey were all represented, and they added a lot to the evening. They have been really good friends to all of us, and they're a great group of people, and they're committed to it, committed, doesn't mean they're gonna continue, or most of them, but they're committed. Athletic fields, if you drove high tonight and you had a chance to turn left and take a look, grass is growing, it's cleaned up. There's a punch list that we're working on, and that should be wrapped up also by the July meeting. So that's, that's looking great. And again, there was even a softball game faculty today, so the field is being used. It's great. On the north of the building, that house. It's great. On the, uh, north of, uh, building, um, that also is progressing. Um, and, uh, so we'll have more as we go along, but we'll have a ready next fall, whether for the kids to start working now. So, um, that's, that's coming along. The East Camper's project, the MOU, uh, been approved, correct?
Yeah, we said to you earlier, we have an executable copy.
Right.
And I just reached out to the PBC to see if they wanted to sign it, wet signature or electronic. I thought I'd have the signed agreement by now. You, you have, just recently received. But both of the lawyers agree as executor. What's that sign? Well, we've already been talking about the next agreement. It's the lease agreement. Just sort of where the, the metal is the road there, rubber is the road. Metal, metal, one of those things. Uh, but they're very open. They're they don't have an agenda. They just wanna be a teaching analyst. I'll keep you up to date on that as I can, Kathleen. Any questions about that? So the South Campus Project, they, ooh, there's something new. That's the foundation of the South End. Where we had two foundations built and we're going through the whole thing. That has been always targeted to be a storage garage. So that frees up space in landscaping, horticulture, as well as in probably environmental and facilities and operations. Uh, Solar Block is a company that is going through the final stages of UL underwriters' laboratory approval for their solar basin reunit. And they've given us a proposal, uh, to be the first purchaser of Solar Block and installers. And they've, uh, given us a proposal that it's about thirty, forty thousand dollars or something. Where that includes the Solar Block delivery, all the basery stuff, and the training of our kids. Actually put it up with the Solar Block CEO, who was a mason. It was also, full disclosure, transparency, the son of Jim Lavery. Who's had this company for eight, nine years. So there's an MOU that the lawyers have, and just this afternoon, Peter Sutter, uh, had a bunch of things about the MOU. So that'll come back. Any purchases happen. But we're hoping that that might be a project for the students this fall. It's Solar Block. I don't know if you, have I talked to you about that before? It's bills of solar collection device as you build a cement wall, concrete block wall. And it'll go into a system that is basically a battery backup system behind the mirror. Shouldn't impact, will not impact anything we're doing, TV, uh, whatever.
But it's a great educational opportunity.
And we've got grants with them before. Do training as well as training materials development from the MASC E C. How did you?
Okay, or additional, I should say. Okay, school reports. Wanna join us at the table?
We're the chair. Hey, happy to report, uh, first item in our first in-person National Honor Society induction star in this building. We haven't been in a whole one in two years. We're going to be doing it with virtual. So it's kinda nice. We had eighteen students. And I was one. So that was exciting for us to, to finally realize that we actually have a new one here and set up in theater. Uh, we also have a awards night. Again, the first in-person awards night. Students and parents, that's senior, seniors, and a couple of juniors who won a special award. About sixty-six percent of the senior class received some, uh, some, some kind of. That was great. And while we're talking about this, it was our first time in here, how we can maximize use of the space when getting more people here. How we range it's all very exciting. It was great to see kids come out with smiles and satisfaction. I, I wrote that I really believe that this class, after all they have been through in particular, really the most deserving group ever to receive the awards because their, their role. None of us, I think, can truly understand. I can't imagine what it's like to be a teenager having fought through COVID, social media and all that, everything. So it was really a great, I, I had to, I. At our graduation, the next day, if you would ask around, you know, November, how many seniors do you think we're gonna have walk across the stage based on everything you see, we would've said a hundred and twenty-two. Guess what? That and a thousand. We got every single one of them across the stage, which is great. And I think it's a testament to, um, the hard work, our fact that we have some instruction, structure, the expectations that we have among the kids. It's, it's just fantastic to see the entire group. Next year's a little bigger, sure. This is a bigger class, seventy-six or so. So, you know, we buttoned up that ceremony in about an hour. I think it's gonna go a little longer next year. I'm gonna bring a pad to your chair. You sit for a little bit longer. So that's it as far as those, you guys have any questions or?
Yeah. This has been a very challenging. And as we've got reports through the year, we've been a lot of talks. More than we expected to this year, back at. PBC, we want, hopefully, this will be. Lots of learning during COVID, all the changes and policies and. So could you, uh, briefly summarize the, uh, thought process of the kids? And where they are, how they feel about school, how successful the year was for the student, especially the ones perhaps that are the most challenged. Now, the words, the ideals, I would look back and say, which is what I would. Could you give us some sense on, um, of that?
Yeah, I think, uh, students this year, learning loss is real, you know, when we got back. But I think, um, we expected that. You know, so you're, you're prepared for that in terms of the differentiated instructional adjustments in your classes. I think the biggest challenge for students and for teachers is really, what I see is the students having really struggling with getting back into those basic routines and those expectations of, I don't know, you're going, you're going to another class. You don't have twenty-five minutes off like we used to do when you were virtual all day. Cause we needed your brain, right? Go, go to another one. And so, you know, it's, uh, for some, for some students, it has been challenging. Cause in some ways, you know, we were able to, uh, and hide out a little bit in virtual world, you know, and now, you know, we're right back into it. So that's been a big challenge, I think, for kids. And I also think of the journey that we've all been on with masking and rest to get to this point now. It's been interesting. We still have kids, you know, that are wearing masks, it's still the option. But it's, you know, the start with, uh, that uncertainty at the beginning of the year, maybe even fear ramped up. Christmas, January, you know, we weren't even having any great sports. Shutting down games and then to kinda get where we are now where, okay, you can not have a mask. You know, but I, I wrote this as a faculty of the day. It has been a year of transformation from, you know, real fear to learning how to live. It'd take a year ago, we didn't have any sports. This year, we put four teams into the state tournament. Nice, kind of like a back to normal, even with the learning loss and all the rest. A hundred and twenty-two, hundred, you know, one thousand, bang, a thousand on the senior class. You can't ask for more than that. Based on everything else that we can. So I think, you know, we're, we're gonna continue to work through that learning loss. Those adjustments for kids, you know, adapting to, readjusting to standards and expectation. There's no quit here.
I'm very glad you're, what you're saying, cause I know that some of the earlier parts of the year was very discouraging. And that came across to the challenges that we're working and having this happy end. Back then, we didn't know, you know, what the end point was gonna be, but then it'd be perhaps pretty good. Would that be your statement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Ford.
I'd like to know a little bit of what George said, you know, coming from him, but if you, uh, have the opportunity, if you haven't, watched the Minuteman graduation, which is always a great thing to do, Judy and Michael were there, and, uh, listen to the speeches of the kids. Because they talked about their four years in Minuteman and the COVID and all that. And, um, I, I, it's very enlightening to listen to them rather than administrator, not, not rather than that, in addition, through an administrator, because, uh, it's, uh, it's well worth watching. Uh, I always find graduation made it very special in Minuteman because one other thing I just always I've seen that in graduations at other schools, every kid is appreciated by every kid as they walk across the stage. It's a very welcome, uh, thing to say. So if you get a chance to get to some point, it's on you to.
Yes, one of the other things that I think has been, um, really good to keep a pulse on is the increase that the school has done with social media and the participation of kids and families commenting on that. Um, you know, before I would be bringing a lot of this back to the community. And now what I get is interest and feedback specifically from students and alumni. Um, on, did you see, well, we saw, you know, X, Y, and Z on, on Instagram, on Facebook. We, it, it brought us back to the Minuteman age. Um, and, and, and so that's another pulse. Um, having children who are alumni, who have friends that were still in programs and graduating. Um, George, to your point, um, it's been a tough couple of years. Um, but the, the kids positivity and support and the, the networking and infrastructure scaffolding that they've cobbled together and utilized along with alumni and, and staff and support have been phenomenal. And, and as they transition to their new roles, um, wherever they go. You, you know, they're, they're better equipped than what I've seen through kids in traditional programs, within traditional schools, within the state. So that's, uh, another huge testament. Um, and, and the reinforcement for me, that the school and the staff are doing the right thing. So, um, you know, it's, it's, it's good feedback, which is another, other puzzle.
Thank you. I give some credit. You have to give some credit to Dan Live for really keeping my lightness on.
Yeah, well done.
And on the social media, and I, I also think, kind of, Jeff, I think it's been interesting with, uh, this, there's a one is still aligning the, uh, COVID experience. It, it really has broad use of technology there as a communication, two-way communication tool. So way better at checking kids' grades and emailing and, you know, looking for that information and breaking the idea of having teams on Zoom. Oftentimes, whether it's admissions or even just running IP. Our location can be a barrier for people who have to work or drive or get here at certain times. And that has been kind of an upside now. That's a familiar technology. You know, engage families in a different way now. Uh, so there's one upside.
You'll give that as appropriate.
Absolutely.
Telecommunication has changed. School, changed the workplace, changed so many things. I was curious to, to ask if you have a sense of how many kids, uh, applying to, to colleges about their first choices?
Well, that's, that's a loaded question because we, I can tell you, uh, where they're going. I can tell you where they got accepted. And where they got accepted may have been their first choice, but that may not necessarily go because effectively, you know. We have, um, we did collect, and I think Dan actually published some of that general information, but we do have a pretty extensive survey we're doing every single scene to try to capture all of that information. So we do, we do have.
Okay, any other questions for George?
Before I go, I just wanna say thank you, Jen, Dave. I remember your kids being here. I remember working with your kids, you know, with some capacity over the years. So it really does, you know, between this and that. And I mean, it just feels like an end of an era, so amazed, you know. So that's a lot. And thank you for all this support. Thanks to the school committee for helping us get through. Particularly, I think, the last two weeks, you know, we had so much promise and energy in the following twenty nineteen. And then we're only just gonna, you know, crisis mode ever since. And we've always been the most thankful. So thank you. And I'll say just a quick, oh, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the administration. You know, so I feel, I already wrote him a little thing and I read it at, you know, we had a little celebration a few weeks ago. So this and that, and I just wanna assure the committee that having met Dr. Dawson, I can tell already that she's scary smart. Which is great, but she also seems genuinely nice. And, uh, you can also pick up that there's that definite passion for education. So I think between her and then I look at, you know, what remains, the most important thing is, you have a top flight faculty. CTE academics, you know, this is, I go with, I know street words all the time. Competent, caring, collaborative. That's who they are. It's all the right for kids. As long as that faculty remains in the foundation, this is all set. So we, we, we left us in good, good position not to be in a really private.
And that, that, that's the, the, the doctor B design. Everybody on the staff is singing from the same sheet.
I'd just like to say, I call the administration that, that have been very respectful. Overdue and no needed, but it's a great time to refresh, but it's a great time to. Given, as you say.
Start my vacation.
Again, lots of gratitude as well for all of your, your leadership and, you know, helping the school get through, you know, this last few very difficult years.
Thank you.
Okay, finance report, Rich and Michael.
From you first, Mike? No, I'll let you do it. I, I was on the pitch and Steve, I was gonna be here. All right. Well, I will bring you up to date on the finance committee. We met last week and talked about much of the things that I reported on. Other lawyers that were part of that were, approved your warrants and we also, they also came up with a sort of dates for next year's. Said that, I will go right into the rest. Before you, in the packet is a, a group, a group for certification of the excess and deficiency fund to reduce the number of towns assessments for the FY twenty-three. Ask you to approve this vote. This is a vote to, to sort of, it's certified at the six hundred and fifty thousand, which will be used to, how to be in E to lower the number of assists. Now, it says.
So move this right to the future.
Okay, any discussion? Jeff?
The only question is, this is the amount we've been talking about for a while.
Correct. You have voted, this, this will be the third time you have voted.
And just to clarify, we're not voting a different six hundred and fifty thousand each time. It's the same six hundred. Just clarifying. Um, other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Tune in, thank you.
Next, it, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask for your approval of the contract for the food and engine services. I have reached out, uh, did RFP, uh, earlier this year and received a one bid unfortunately. Uh, I have two that came in for the watch from Fresh Pick Cafe. I think we've talked about this earlier, uh, in previous meeting. I did a survey of our students earlier. I did a survey of our students earlier in late twenty one and asked them how they felt about the food services current. And while they were resoundingly upset with the quality. In like variety and so forth. So Dr. McCollum asked me to look into alternative measures. So I went out and started looking at food management service vendors and so forth. I had a previous experience with this in previous district, so had a little bit of understanding. That with three different vendors, I didn't walk through, I said, two vendors showed up and we ended up with one. They are based out of New Hampshire. They are making inroads into Massachusetts and so we're excited about the opportunities for our students. The contract has been vetted by both Eagle and Desi. Can't bring it before you even took Desi approved it. I was kind of backwards, but they're very happy with the contract and asking me to vote for it. So from now on, we'll start as of July one. Services again.
I'm very glad you said that Eagle and Desi both looked at it. Cause I looked at this contract, I said, I do. Intelligent. The level of specificity. Doctor Desi before King Dawson. Are you disappointed that you only got one vendor who was interested and you have trepidation about these people?
I'm not disappointed. I'm not, and I'm not surprised. Last address I was in, we had one as well. Trepidation, I think there's always trepidation, knowing with a new type of service for our for our school and for our students. I feel good about the people that I'm talking to right now. In fact, one of the employees on Fresh Cafe is a former director of food services here, Heather. So she is on, sorry, thank you. So she's wild, not saying that she's gonna go for us, but she is a, we have some people that work in there. The services have some direction of her and work with her. So I do have some sort of.
I read the whole contract. If you haven't read it, I highly recommend it. It is really, really. There's all this stuff about what happens around the end of the year. Where, you know, where is it? Where does go back to? Here's some things that are USC expected and other things that are expected by government. It's just a riot. I think it all comes from the history of the school lunch program, which actually the national school lunch program was actually instituted to and make up for malnutrition in troops in World War Two. So it is, it's this program, it's just kind of like it's gone along and changed and too much salt, too much sugar. Not enough meat, not too much meat, you know, it's just been so interesting to watch. And this particular contract, I've enjoyed it once. Thank you very much.
Wow, I didn't expect that. Judy, then Ford.
I have to say, I did read most of it, half of it, but it was like almost like historical check. I did appreciate that. So there was a lot of on contract talking and I, so I wanted to thank you. So I have a comment and a question. So I was really impressed how our recent years of experience kept come to play. Because there is a section, it's in ten point seven, it talks about should the days listed be reduced through the remote learning, things like that. So I I was almost hoping to come to that, but I don't, but I do have a question. Inflation is no a trend right now. It never is, but quickly at this point in time. So between, you know, price fuel and gas and food. I don't, and I probably missed this part in the contract, but, you know, is there any safety net or anything like that or trip? You know, kind of like the gas for school buses in the contract because of the unexpected burden?
Is not a clear mechanism for that, but they guarantee these numbers for us for this year. I would suspect that in year two, it may be a different story than like, like you guessed. Right now, these are numbers that they've given us. These are recent, these are within the last month.
So they know what they're getting you. Thank you.
Ford?
Um, there's how many schools that I already interviewed, you know, that list they gave me was forty plus. And five in Massachusetts. I'm sure you did some checks. And they all got very high grades. Students love their food. They all were.
Funny thing is, is that the ones in Massachusetts, they're the ones I most of them have come on Cisco. So they haven't had a year, a full year of service or whatnot. I did reach out to two schools in New Hampshire that were looked like they were been with them for a while and they came back very positive. So it was one message they've been with for years, five years.
And their staffing will be appropriate to our needs?
It will be. They guarantee the appropriate amount of staffing to serve six hundred fifty five students or seven hundred and eighty, well, maybe. Something we've had very difficult times trying to take. And the cost for the students who are making the same. We all have fifty cents. And they are, will also be able to cater for us, so.
We may be getting one of them on the table.
With the motion on the table, a second, are there further questions? Tell us.
Did they give you the menu that was thirty two?
They do not.
But I noticed that Gavin, there that there are different groups that are gonna review it.
You 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 were hesitant to give us something until they that they have a nutritionist ready. I'm excited.
Other questions?
I expect. Thank Dr. Dawson.
Other, anything else before we move to a vote? And all in favor? Okay, unanimous?
Uh, next on the for your approval is to pay proof of it. Fire your bill. You had one of these, one of you earlier this year, again, it's from Enker and it's for a these detail or a hockey game. On three hundred seventeen dollars and thirty cents, twenty cents.
If I may add, the explanation for late this year was similarly unsatisfactory as to when this happened a year ago. They were looking over their records and saying, oh, we found weak, I can build you.
Well, we have Steve, that's the one.
So moved is written in the agenda.
Second.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Unanimous?
And lastly, to approve the monthly informational list donation as presented.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Yes, unanimous. Thank you.
If I may, I'd like to also convey my sentiments to Dr. McCollum. Three years ago, this man took me in when I was looking for a job and has been a big supporter of mine. In fact, I, you know, was very surprised when he came to me a year ago and said that he wanted to make me the assistant superintendent to help honor and really wanted to live up to his expectations. I hope I have. Dr. McCollum, thank you so much and forward to being in communication with you going forward.
Okay, moving on to committee reports. Jennifer?
So this is where I come in to tell you that I let the ball drop. So yes, I and I promise that I will be sure I see this sort of to be at. But my expectation is we should have something sent out to you for the survey next week. Julia?
Yes.
Reasonable, okay. So then I might have to just give you an update as a depending on what happens with the membership. In this meeting, I might just come on the next meeting and give you how anyone came up with it. But I will see that privately in charge of doing that. You know, it's, it it feels kind of weird. And maybe that's why I've been so involved about it, but it just feels like it.
More than I am.
It feels like I'm like what what's gonna happen? You know, so, but I promise that we will get this done. We will get this submitted. Desi's not gonna be out for us. I'll make it happen.
I have to get evaluated even though I'm being teaching, still gonna evaluate.
You gotta go first.
Thank you very much. Thank you for seeing it through. Transition task force.
Two meetings and they're going just fine or, you know, their entry plan, that's gonna be an ongoing activity throughout, I'm sure, the course of this year. But we're there to help her and basically we turn to this. She needs to, she sets the agenda for the meeting, it's her meeting, and we're there to help. So that's point five.
I don't see any questions about that. So moving on to policy. So Alice.
So we've got three policies to take action on tonight. So the first one is the consent agenda policy, the BBC that we talked about the last meeting. Or a second reading.
So moved for a second reading.
Okay, discussion. Questions? Okay, all in favor? As is unanimously.
Thank you. So that policy actually requires us to take a second vote to make it feasible for school to get the annual vote on that, which I guess would be a July meeting. The next one is the long-term old debt funding policy. As you may recall, that Jennifer raised the good question whether the ten thousand dollars mentioned before new employees or who have to be employees. It's new, and I believe that that same was made in the document. So the motion to approve the amended policy for second reading, the one that's being packed.
Any discussion? Jeff?
So I just want to, I'm pretty sure like in the year in which we are having financial difficulties. We can vote to amend this policy. What is us as aggressive payout? No, we're not binding ourselves with this, but it is, it is the finance committee's recommendation that this is, this is a prudent measure to 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 watch.
Anything else? All in favor? As is unanimous.
So you may recall that we voted to pay up use of school facilities, please obviously renew the school facility policy. It happens at ECBA, the old coding that we used to use, and that one is still in our documents. But has to be removed. You have to vote to remove it. So the vote should reach to approve that use of school facility policy ECBA be removed from the policy.
So moved this event is.
Any questions, comments? All in favor? As is unanimous. Thank you, and thank you to the policy itself. Okay, secretary's report.
Okay, page one hundred minutes, you have two corrections. So number seven. It had the word during percent. That needs to be done during this last year. And then the numbering was off. It was seven, it went seven to nine, it needs to go seven, eight, nine. So there's that change. Those two changes were some.
Any comments? Michael?
On page nine, I believe, of minutes, I extolled the history and approach of the BBC. Which I was mistaken about. I thought BBC stood for Boston Veterinary Care, which is a branch of the animal rescue league. It stands for Boston Veterinary Clinic, which although is also founded and primarily located in the south end of Boston, is a different entity. So I mistake. We just to retract that. I I was, I I was so drunk.
Okay, any other, anything else on the minutes? All in favor? As is you, oh, no, abstaining.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Julia, did you get that?
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I I was mistaken. They both go by the same acronym and they're located literally like around the block from each other.
Yes, you said it.
Okay, thank you.
And do we have the executive section?
I had expected to hear more from the town by this point as where it did. But I have nothing to go into executive section. But I will let you know that the town's taking our requests much more seriously. No.
In that case, could I have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
All in favor? Thank you very much.